Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Virginia City Council Chambers. We'll call the City Council meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. The time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Barabu.
Present.
Freedleeb.
Present.
Paulson.
Present.
Biondich.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Terrence Ali.
Coffey.
Present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a four on the agenda, which is the public forum. There is no one in the audience this evening to speak, so we'll move to item number five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on July 27th, 2021. 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 21-015, the Schedule of Bills. 5.3 is approved pay estimate number 14 to Kraus Anderson for the Ewens Field Development in the amount of $526,019.97. Item 5.4, approved pay estimate number 14. The same pay estimate? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, same number, though. Okay, item 5.4 is approved pay estimate number 14 to Kraus Anderson for the MECC, or now the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, in the amount of $2,167,421.66. Item 5.5, approve the transient merchant license for Nancy Kwitkowski doing business at his Jews Walk and Roll Kitchen. And finally, item 5.6, approve the travel request for Ryan Maloney, police officer, to attend the TASER instructor training course in Grand Rapids, Minnesota on September 16th, 2021 as a budgeted cost of $432. Those are the consent agenda items presented today, looking for council action.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Council Paulson moves to approve the consent agenda, supported by Council Freedleeb. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, appearances. We have no one on the agenda this evening. We'll move to item number seven, which is unfinished business. We have no unfinished business under the agenda. We have item eight, which are discussion items. Item 8.1, the planning and zoning meeting that was held on August 19th, excuse me, on August 9th, 2021, and you have before you the document. Item A is Jason Metzger located at 429 14th Street North, moved by Member Byrd and supported by Member Littler to deny a conditional use permit up to 12 months for the placement of a temporary worksite storage container on the east side of Fifth Avenue due to a planned remodel of both the garage and house structures. The motion carried. Then it was moved by Byrd and supported by Littler to approve a conditional use permit for the placement of a temporary worksite storage container on the east side of Fifth Avenue due to a planned remodel of both garage and house structures not to include November 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2022, not to hinder snow removal at 429 14th Street North. Motion carried. And then it was moved by Littler and supported by Byrd to allow the placement of temporary worksite storage container in the yard at 429 14th Street North for up to 12 months. Motion carried. These are the recommendations made by the planning and zoning. All apply to one residence. Looking for a motion.
So move to approve the recommendations by planning and zoning?
Move by Council Freedleeb to approve the recommendations by planning and zoning is their support. Support by Council Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.2. We have a resolution that was brought before us just prior to the City Council meeting. It is a motion, a resolution to be approved dated August 10th, 2021, resolution approving the hiring of the event program services manager for the city of Virginia, resolved by the City Council in the city of Virginia, whereas the Park and Recreation Department of the city of Virginia desires to fill the newly created full-time event program services manager position, and whereas this position is covered under the MAP bargaining unit agreement, and whereas, as per city hiring policy, applications have been received by the human resources staff for this position, and interviews were conducted accordingly, and whereas it is the recommendation to hire James Hunt as the full-time event program services manager with a start date honored before August 10th, 2021 contingent upon a successful background check and pre-employment physical. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the city of Virginia hereby approves the hiring of James Hunt for the full-time event program services manager position for the city of Virginia, subject to a successful background check and pre-employment physical. Looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Council Freedleeb is their support?
Support.
Support by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Council Barabu.
Didn't I hear rumors that he took a job at a casino? A different James Hunt?
That was the previous applicant.
Well, it was previous, okay. All right. Okay. All right. Just the same name. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very concerned about that we're only hiring one person for this position. I think we really need to be looking at, the feedback seems to be that we really are asking this one person do a lot more than one person can do, as we continue to do with Brian, asking way too much. I would, I don't know when or how it appropriate, but I think we need to look at finding someone to help this person immediately, knowing that the process that we've been through now has been a month plus trying to get this position filled. And I don't know what that looks like, or if we need to do a personnel committee with, to look at job descriptions or what, but for consideration after this, after this motion, or after this motion, we need to do something more to help Brian, because right now he's the only person that knows what's going on at the new building that's opening in just over a month, and we need to get at least two more people to help with that. I know we're in the process for the maintenance person, but I'm just concerned about the overall, what's happening because this process has taken so long, not due to anything we've done other than we could have started earlier, but, but I think that getting this person on board will help with that, and hopefully we can get the process of background check done relatively quick.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll move to item nine, committee reports. 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on August 3rd, 2021. Turn this portion of the City Council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
Thank you. At the August 3rd Committee of the Whole Meeting, Georgia Lane from the Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging, or ARDC, presented to the City Council an award for the Aging Impact Award for the city's efforts to help the aging community, specifically keeping the trail programs in the Virginia plow in the winter so that senior citizens could continue to utilize the trail system. It was suggested to staff to proceed with the age-friendly initiative designation for our city. Pat Wertz from Kraus Anderson gave a construction update on the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Wertz reviewed the items that have been delayed due to COVID and the setbacks from receiving products for construction and furniture and fixtures. Mr. Brian Silber, Park and Recreation Director, proposed an outdoor fitness grant that he had submitted that we were awarded, and is suggesting that we approve a resolution to apply for and accept a matching grant from the National Fitness Campaign for the allocations of funds for an outdoor fitness court in the amount of $25,000, realizing the total project cost is $100,000, and we are still seeking outside funding to make up the gap.
So, thank you. Under item 9.98, it was moved and supported at committee level to adopt the resolution to apply for and accept a matching grant with the National Fitness Campaign for the allocation of funds for an outdoor fitness court in the amount of $25,000, and further discussion was made that if in the event that we were unable to secure additional funding for this project in the amount that's required, that we would no longer be eligible for this grant. So, but we are going to apply for it. It was at committee level, so looking for council action.
I would move the application for the grant.
Thank you. Council Freedleeb moves to approve the application for the grant. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Council Biondich?
Was the total amount of the project 140,000, and the grant was for 30? So we were looking at 110?
I believe the grant, I believe the grants for $25,000, we have to match that for another $25,000, but the total cost of the projected cost of the space that our Park and Rec Director is looking for is approximately $100,000. Thank you. Okay. Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. On a different, on a separate issue with the, the Iron Trail Motors Event Center design team, it's helpful, we also were discussing some artwork and some potential funding sources, and one resource that I just was recently looking on the IRRB website, they have a cultural and tourism one-to-one match, and I believe it's up to $30,000, I believe, and I don't know if that would qualify, one of the qualifiers, but if this outdoor space is going to maybe be ADA accessible, I think it would fit very nicely with the cultural and tourism grant, so maybe that could be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Paulson. So it has been moved and supported to apply for the $25,000 grant, and then, so that's been moved and supported, and is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and thank you, Council Paulson, for that. I will have staff look into that for some additional funding source. Okay.
It was moved and supported to approve the beverage and vending pouring rights agreement with Sunberg Enterprises LLC. We did have our attorney review this, and we do have comments.
After the last meeting, I took a little closer look at the document with Brian Lindsay, city attorney as well, and I believe the version that the council was looking at last time had some significant changes. One area, the only area of concern was, it was in then paragraph three, which I don't believe is in the version that's here right now, but there was a unilateral extension of the contract by the vendor, and our recommendation is that that provision be changed so that the city can weigh in and give consent and approval. It's not a significant change. Mr. Lindsay did attempt to reach out to Sunberg Enterprises and their council. He hasn't been successful yet, but he asked me to relay this to the council that you could approve it subject to that change.
Thank you, Colleen. Council Barabu? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, Council Paulson?
Thank you. And with that being said, I'll, I go ahead and move to approve subsequent to those changes being made.
Council Paulson moves to approve the beverage and vending pouring rights agreement with Sunberg Enterprises LLC with the recommended changes by our city attorney staff. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Brian Silber presented information regarding a live-streamed option from U Sports Plus for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. After discussion, it was moved and supported to allow staff to work with the city attorney and our staff to draft an agreement for live-streaming services with U Sports Plus for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Okay. Looking for council action?
I would move to allow the agreement with the live-streaming with U Sports Plus for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center?
Council Freedleeb moves to approve the city attorney to draft the agreement for the live stream with U Sports. Is there support?
I'll support, Mayor.
Support by Council Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mike Vidmar from 607 Fifth Street South was present to discuss his alley concerns. There was a street and alley meeting today, and we will have a report from that in a little bit. It was moved and supported to approve the request for a community recovery night out in Alcott Park on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
We will move that request.
Council Johnson moves to approve the event. Is there support? Support by Council Freedleeb. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve sending a letter of support for Jefferson Airlines to apply for federal funding.
Looking for? Moved by Council Freedleeb is their support?
Or?
Support by Council Barabu. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
No further action items from that meeting, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item 9.2 on the agenda, which is the street and alley report. There was a street and alley meeting this, today, and I'll turn this over to our street and alley chair and members of the, of the committee, which is the chair, Council Barabu, and members, Council Johnson, Council Barneselli. Council Barabu.
Thank you, Mayor. We met at 1:00 this afternoon. The first item on the agenda was the gentleman came in requesting that we block off Mr. Anthony Ebner to block, temporarily block off the alley at 106 North Second Avenue on September 8th, 9th, and 10th from 7:30 to 5:30 PM for brick renovation. They're going to be doing work on the building. He bought the building that's adjacent to the alley, and he needs certain room and space to work on that over those three, three days. So it is recommended, and we approved at committee level, and I'll make that motion that we allow that blocking of that alley on those dates and those times.
Okay, moved by Council Barabu is their support? Support by Council Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is the one we passed, passed along from earlier in the agenda, and we had a meeting today, and we have three motions coming off of that, or not motions, or recommendations, or motions coming off of that meeting. The first one is to rescind the motion to block the south end of the Fifth Alley South, and I'll explain why, for reasons of safety, and we need that thoroughfare for big trucks and for getting to the properties that are back in that temporary alley, and then we'll show you what the recommendations are. There'll be a couple more motions.
Okay, so the first?
One more motion.
Okay, so the first motion from your committee, Council Barabu, is to?
Rescind.
Recommend to the city council to rescind the motion to block south end of Fifth Street Alley?
That is correct.
Okay, looking for, was a motion by Council Barabu is their support?
Or?
A support by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Then in front of you have a big map, and Matt was kind enough to get done in a hurry for us, to put temporary barricades to leave a 20-foot opening past Mr. Vidmar's property with some stop signs that you'll see, one where the alley comes out behind his property, one coming the other direction, and one that isn't showing here on the way going south on the type-three barricade on the south barricade, another stop sign that'll slow that traffic up, and then a stop sign on the alley, which is, what is that called? What alley is that? It's got a name.
Rogersville Road.
So that'll slow up this traffic, to put those three, four stop signs in to slow up the traffic in that area, so allow for the big trucks and everything, temporary. We went through with Sherry Iwakas to pave that and do the dust control in front of his place, and there's other residents, and the school down has their property, and they're going to continue to use that storage building even though the high school's going away when the new elementary's put up. It'd be a hardship on the other residents, so we felt it isn't feasible to block off that whole alley, but this would slow up the traffic coming down that alley and still allow for the access from that direction. So that's our, going to be our new recommendation, and that motion would be to put up the, install type-three barricades with a 20-foot opening on the Fifth Street Alley and install the appropriate stop signs on the barricades for traffic control, and that motion was a recommendation for a motion at this meeting, so that is what I'm going to move. That makes sense to everybody.
Thank you. Council Barabu, it's been moved by Council Barabu. Is there support? A support by Counselor? Counselor Barabu?
Counselor.
I'm sorry. Motion by Counselor Barabu, supported by Counselors at Barneselli, or which one? Counsel by Counsel Barneselli, to install, to direct staff to install type-three, three barricades with a 20-foot opening on the Fifth Street Alley and install the appropriate stop signs on the barricades for traffic control. Is there further discussion?
And then the one down a little bit further where Fourth Street comes in from the north, to slow it up from that school traffic coming back out of there. See the one, the third one, there's four stop signs. They missed one, they missed one. And the one coming off of the, off from Rogersville Road, there's no stop sign there either, but one there to go by Fifth Street. The whole motion's got to include all those stop signs.
Right. I say, I say the motion here is to install the appropriate stop signs on the barricades for traffic control.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you. So that's cover everything that you covered, so it has been moved?
Except three of those aren't on the barricades, they're, they're separate from, from that, if you can see on the map.
Yeah, to install the appropriate stop signs and those on the barricade for traffic.
That's correct. That's where it should be.
Thank you. Council Barabu.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Council Biondich.
Is that legally an alley? Do we have a legal description of that piece of property?
We do, we do have a legal, legal description of that. It was a piece of railroad property that was given, or was?
But is it an alley or a street, or?
No.
Is it designated?
No, but we've had it for so long, we can do what we like with designation of that road. We don't have to, we can do that at any council meeting down the road.
It's not a designated road, and it's not a designated alley, but it is a, a piece of property that's used by residents and the school and others to gravitate back and forth to, in the back of that area, and so it's been used that way for decades, but it is not a designated alley and not a designated street.
Is there a way to do that?
Yes, there is.
There is a process?
We have, we have properties in town that we don't know what they are, and this isn't the only one, so that's why I'm kind of looking into it and digging at it, because we have properties that do not have, what are they? It's not an alley, it's not a street. So how do we make it that way legally to do things?
I believe all we need to do, Britt, is do it by resolution, correct? Isn't that right, John?
We have to designate it as an alley and designate it as such, a name of the alley with its description by, by resolution.
We can make an extension of Rogersville Road if we want to.
And we can do that, Colleen.
We can do anything.
That's correct, with the appropriate notices and whatnot. Yeah.
With appropriate notices and, yes, thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Council Barabu. Anything further? Council Biondich?
No, but I do think we need to continue to do what we need to do to make it for a legal description. Whatever that takes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Council Freedleeb?
And I would just add to that, that there is some interest in the neighborhood from people that would like to extend their properties across that Rogers Road and utilize that space for whatever purpose. So there is some interest in the community for how that property is designated, who owns it, and how could they potentially purchase it, just kind of FYI.
Yes, thank you. And that, we have done that in the past in Ridgewood, as a matter of fact, and where they had, she'd owned the property, the neighbors, we plotted out, the neighbors bought the property, and, and they maintained it, and it was no longer a roadway system or access to, it's all privately-owned property, so. So, but it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Part of the discussion was also to make sure that people know it's public parking right now, because it is public. That's all for the city of Virginia land, so I think that, that once we get the signage put up, I would be willing to make a motion to, to direct staff to start the process of defining that property and make sure the rest of Rogersville Road to the south is also defined as, because I'd be curious to know, we haven't looked past this little block, how much to the south is alley and how much is Rogersville Road and that kind of stuff. So, Mayor, after this vote, I will be, I would like to make another motion.
Thank you, Council Johnson. So this motion is moved and supported with respect to the posting of the signage, and I guess we'll repeat the motion one more time to make sure that we all understand, that actually, so the general public understands that the motion by the committee has been moved and supported to, to direct staff to install three-type barricades with a 20-foot opening on Fifth Street Alley and install the appropriate stop signs on the barricades and at the appropriate intersections as designated on the map. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So is there any further discussion? Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to kind of tack onto what Counselor Biondich is requesting, I believe that last time, Pam, you read the minutes back, and I had already requested that, and it was already, I had asked for that legal description, and I think you were here during that meeting. So do we need to make another motion, or is that being done? Okay, so just to confirm that that is being done, that we will have a legal description, and I also think for emergency purposes? and I also think for emergency purposes, if someone was in an accident, that does need to be labeled, you know, so they can, if they needed to call for help or something, I think that's important. So I appreciate that that's being done. Is there a time parameter on that?
Because it is railroad property, the legals are going to be very difficult. It is very difficult to write it, but we are working on it. It's, it's coming.
Okay.
Hopefully soon.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And you're absolutely correct with the signage, we really should get some kind of name on that thing if.
Yep. Yep, and then I guess, you know, to Counseler Freely's point, as, if we do designate that, and there is discussion from the neighbors or the property owners in that, in that area to do a potential buy across, will that prohibit when we do a legal description of that alleyway, roadway, whatever it is?
No, we would need that legal anyway if we were going to do that, so it's just a step.
Okay.
To whatever we're doing, it would be a first step anyway.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Paulson. So it has been moved and supported to meet the recommendations, requirements of putting the traffic control devices on that property that was originally discussed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, second motion?
I would move that we direct city staff and our attorney to create, go through the process of labeling the alley as such or road as such, and making sure all of that property along that old grade is designated as roadway or whatever it needs to be to make that area complete.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Counsel Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Counsel Bearbow?
That completes the street and alley meeting from today.
Was there a couple more items there with respect to the discussion of a curb cut along Third Street?
Yeah, we had a discussion about looking, and Matt, our engineer's going to take a look at that, whether it's in the current reconstruction of that Third Street or not and come back, because they haven't poured the curbs on there, because there is an old curb cut there to see if we want a curb cut to come in from the Third Avenue into that parking area and would extend that so-called alley or whatever all the way through then, the Third Street from Fifth Street.
Very good, thank you.
He'll come back to us on that.
Okay, thank you. And then on your report, there's another item of concern regarding, Counsel Johnson noted that the Third Street and Ninth Avenue are not blocking traffic during the weekend, is that correct, or not blocked during the weekend?
Yeah, Matt's going to take care of that with the contractor.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you.
It was in relationship to the construction and that not being blocked on, when they're not working.
Very, thank you. And that concludes your report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Counsel Bearbow. Okay, we'll move to item number 10, which is the commission liaison reports. Does any counselor have a commission or liaison report they'd like to give this evening? Counsel Beyondich.
Can't believe we're getting to the end of the summer, and that brings up the End of the Summer Reading Fair that will be held on August 19th from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. at the farmer's market. There will be all kinds of fun things. There's a dunk tank. We know who's in it? Okay.
And I think she's taking volunteers also. If anybody wants to go in the dunk tank, she'll, she'll get you in.
Is that Thursday, August 19th? Thank you. Okay, very good.
So lots of fun activities going on, and thank you, Jody, for everything that has taken place this summer at the library.
Exciting, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number 11, which is the department head reports. Does any department head have a report they'd like to give this evening? John, I think you've outlined some things for us earlier. Anything, any news as yet, or are we premature in some of these projects, economic development projects are coming forth?
Staff is still working on the downtown redevelopment and the fire recovery projects, so we're digging through the state application right now. That's what I've been spending time on, along with the public safety facility, which we had a special meeting on earlier today. Work continues on the hotel project at the miners, the old miners site. I don't want to say the Iron Trail Motors, because it's not there, it's where the old miners is, so next thing we're going to be working on is a, we have a draft development agreement, I'll be bringing that forward to you, and we'll discuss that. Things seems to be moving along fairly well. We have some developers, really good people that want to invest a lot of money downtown, and that's really exciting. And the industrial prospect I had mentioned to you earlier today, we had a conference call, and we got confirmed that they have signed an agreement, and we're going to be announcing that fairly soon, so really excited. Things are going well, it just seems the momentum seems to be building, and more people want to invest in, in this city, and it's a lot of money. We have some real big projects coming up for downtown. It's just been exciting.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you for your hard work on there and your contacts with those different entities, and we look forward to a formal report that you can give to us publicly. Okay, any other department head report? I'm sure that we have one coming from Sherry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually have two requests. I was in and out of the office last week, and so these came, and they're not in your packets, so the first one was a request by the city band for $10,000, and let me explain a little background history. We did not budget it, that money in 2021 because of COVID, but it's my understanding they still played in the COVID, which kudos to them, seriously. So we did not budget for the Masabi Symphony Orchestra. So they are asking if we could give them $10,000 this year because they have played again, and $5,000 to the Masabi. So I would probably taking this out of Brett's contingency fund.
Okay, thank you. So you're asking for us to give you some direction in a motion?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, I look for council action, but the city band is so important to this community that, and they continue to perform and draw crowds in the park as part of our arts and entertainment focus within this community, so, I mean, I think it has to be funded, so I'm looking for some council action and a motion moving forward.
Counsel Bearbow?
First of all, I'm going to move the written resolution if we're going to fund that, because we need to do that. Are these two different entities, no? Okay, can we put those all in one, what do we need, separate ones, probably separate, don't we, waving the resolutions, Brett? Ones for the city band, the others for the orchestra?
One's getting $10,000, one's getting $5,000.
Okay, the first one is for the city band, then.
Let's do two separate motions.
Yeah, I will, well, I'm going to move to waive the written resolution for the city band first.
A motion by Counsel Bearbow to waive the written resolution to, for the city band request for $10,000, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
And I'll make a motion that we authorize the funding of $10,000 for the city.
No, five.
Five, oh, okay, five, okay.
For the Masabi.
That's what confused me, the way you said it. Sorry, sorry, Sherry. $5,000 for the city band.
Well, no, 10 for the city band, five for the.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing, because I, I got to make a motion to pay the $10,000.
Okay.
Okay, so it's $10,000 for the city band.
So we waived the written resolution, we approved that, and now there's a motion on the floor by Counsel Bearbow.
To pay the $10,000.
Pay the city band $10,000 for the services provided in 2021. That's a motion by Counsel Bearbow, is there support for that? Support by Counsel Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Now, the next one would be to waive the written resolution for the orchestra, correct? For this year, or, okay, so I will make that motion to waive the written resolution for 2021.
Counsel Bearbow makes the motion to waive the written resolution regarding the request of $5,000 for the Masabi Symphony Orchestra, supported by Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And the final one will be, move the resolution to pay the $5,000 in 2021 for the orchestra.
Motion by Counsel Bearbow to approve the payment of $5,000 for the Masabi Symphony Orchestra for the 2021 season, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel, support by Counsel Paulson, is there any further discussion? Counsel Beyondich.
I just have a question. Even though it was COVID, why did we remove that from the budget when we received COVID money?
This wasn't part of the COVID money.
Okay.
This was part of the Geno Fund budget, and at the time, the governor had restricted the meeting events, so. For 2021.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Beyondich. So it has been moved and supported. Is there a further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, and is the Symphony Orchestra, Brett, going to be playing at the Mac, at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center for the grand opening?
Yes, during the grand opening week, they will have a string quartet.
They have a spring quartet, so they'll provide that service as well. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move to. No more department head reports, we'll move to item 12, which is the council reports. Does any city council have a report they'd like to give this evening? Counsel Beyondich.
I have two pieces of documentation. I don't know if the, most people know there is a thrift or thrift-type store where the bootery was. I don't know if anybody knows what the money actually goes for. Peggy Patrick and her husband Glenn are running that, and people donate, and then people go in and purchase all the proceeds. They don't take out for utilities, they don't take out for anything. Every penny they make goes for MPN Research, which is a shortened term, it's like a blood type disease, but their first check that they presented to the MPN Research Foundation was $4,161.25. That was on June 29th, and July 1st, they did another check for $2,143. So I just wanted to point out, that is what they are doing in that building, and every penny they make goes for medical research, so it is a great place to go and shop. If you have things to donate, they are happy to take them. So thank you, Peggy and Glenn Patrick, for everything you do.
Thank you, Counsel Beyondich. I may add on real quickly, that storefront is amazing, what a great example of what a storefront can really look like when it's not, you know, when it's unoccupied, and so to add that component of research, and it's amazing that for the Patrick family to do that, so thank you for that report.
Okay, any other council reports this evening? Well, seeing none, we have, we've concluded our business for the city council this evening. We will stand adjourned to a next council meeting, which is August 24th, 2021, 5:30 p.m. right here in the city council chambers. Thank you, and once again, everybody, a lot of hard work, and everybody be, all to be safe and practice, you know, the guidelines established by the CDC and whatever you need to be safe. We look forward to seeing you on the streets. We stand adjourned to our next meeting. Thank you, everybody, have a great evening, good night.